Asking me to log in.
Call to order. The Town of London Dairy Zoning Board of Adjustment, November 19th, 2025. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Before we do anything, I'm going to go over the procedure for our meeting this evening. The clerk will read the case into the record. The applicant will make their presentation. You will come to the two seats here. And you will state your name and address for the record. The board will address the applicant with any questions or comments. Those that are in favor of the request are given the opportunity to address the board. Those that are opposed or having any questions regarding the request are also given the opportunity and will address the board. The applicant will then be given the opportunity to rebut any opposition, and the opposition is given the opportunity for any rebuttal. The board addresses the applicant with any additional questions or comments. If there are none, the public hearing portion regarding the case is closed, at which time the board will enter into deliberations and vote on the request or continues the case to a future date. Those who wish to speak this evening, you will have to come to the podium. You will state your name and address for the record. If any conversation is to be held, you must go through the board. You talk to us. We will ask the applicant. Applicant will then respond to us. We want to keep one voice for this meeting. We ask that you either turn your cell phones to vibrate or turn off your cell phones for this meeting. You may stay during and view the deliberations, or you can go to the town hall the following day within 48 hours of this meeting for the results.
I just want to point out, there's no microphone on the podium there.
Ah, okay.
Just have to drag it.
I mean, I guess they could sit.
They can just move that one up.
Yeah.
They could sit there, too.
Yeah, I don't know if you can just. They have to.
Yep.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
She's fine, so.
Okay. So before we begin this meeting, I would like to have everybody introduce themselves on the board. Nick, would you start us?
I'm Nick Cardnett, building inspector and zoning inspector.
Kristen Farr, town planner.
Barbara, we check full member.
Lisa Sussman, alternate member.
Brendan O'Brien, full member.
Jackie Bernard, full member.
Suzanne Brunel, full member.
Mitch Feig, full member.
Christine Perez, alternate.
Joanne Brennan, alternate member.
Okay, now that we have that and you know who we all are. First order of business, minutes to approve. We will be approving October's minutes first? Yes.
Would you like to put those to the end so that we can discuss things that need to change on there?
Okay.
That's the September minutes.
That's September's, yeah.
Right.
Yes. So can we vote on the October minutes?
Why not?
Okay. I would like, so for those that were not present, it's myself and Lisa. The rest of you were present. Do I have a motion for the October 15th, 2025 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain because I was not present. Okay. So October. October 2025 is approved. Report by town council liaison. Do we have any this evening?
I don't see any.
I don't see any.
Okay, we have none. Let the record show, we have none. Do we have any regional impact determinations this evening?
None this evening.
Thank you. I would like to have a motion for regional impact determination.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the regional impact determination.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this will bring us to our public hearing of cases. Brendan? For this first one. So. I usually, all right, so we're going to hear the first case. However, I just want to bring to mind that we have two cases this evening at the end under other business, which is a request for rehearings. There's going to be no input for that, for those last two cases. There's no public comment. There is no review by the applicant. It's just the board and it's a procedural process. So I just want to let everybody know that. There will be no input because that's not how we do the request for rehearings. But those of you that might be here for those last two cases, we wouldn't want you to sit here thinking that we are going to go through anything because we're not. It's a procedural process for the last two cases. No input. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to make an announcement about the Six Dicky Street ones as well? In case there's anyone in the audience waiting for that?
Very good. So we have also been told, can you confirm that it's December 17th is the next ZBA meeting?
It is.
If that's what I, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I just want that for the record. Okay, so we have case number 1119-2025-4, 1119-2025-5, 1119-2025-6, 1119-2025-7, 1119-2025-8, 1119-2025-9, and 1119-2025-10. All four. Six Dicky Street is going to be. It's going to be, I forgot the right word.
With Dr. Lillajos.
It's going to be rescheduled. Excuse me?
Continued.
Continued until December 17th, for those of you that are here for that. Okay.
All set?
All set.
Case number 1119-2025-1, a request for a special exception from LZO 5.12.5 to allow use of home occupation for childcare facility in the AR1 zoning district. Parcel is located at 80 South Road in the AR1 zoning district, tax map 4, lot 09-3. I apologize for the, if I mispronounced this, Silke Evdakimov and Artem Evdakimov, owner, Melissa LeBlanc-Lafave, applicant. And again, I apologize.
They're not here, but you did well.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So please state your name and address for the record.
Melissa LeBlanc-Lafave at 80 South Road in London Dairy.
And have you ever done this before?
No.
Did you, so it's special exception, so we have a list. Okay. So would you like to start to tell us about what it, why you're here for that?
So I work with toddlers. I'm a nanny, but I'm shared by multiple families. However, I share them in my own homes because they listen better if they're not at home in their playroom. However, I'm only allowed to care for four in my home, but mom is, just delivered her baby, and I need a license to have one more friend.
Would you like to tell us how many you're going to be caring for?
Six? That would be probably, well, two are like part-time, and so I would allow that, I'd be allowed the six. But also, the license would be needed for like when the older brothers are off from school. They could come on their day off, so mom can still work.
Okay, so six total, two part-time, and four full-time?
Yes.
And the hours of operation?
7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning till 5:00.
Okay. And declare the days that you'd be doing this?
Monday to Friday.
Monday through Friday. No weekends?
No, that's babysitting at their house. That's extra, like to Lou.
Okay. Okay. Do, does any of the boardrooms have any questions?
I just had one. So do you own the house, rent the house?
I rent the house. The owners, I used to nanny for them, and then the little boy went to school and they moved in grandma. And they were like, well, they bought the house for me to rent with an access to the bottom so that I could still care for my little friends.
So the reason I asked the question is just simply if we grant the variance, if we do, and they're not the owners, is that variance going to be in perpetuity with that property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a key point to make, so.
Special exception, yep.
Yeah. I thought so, but just wanted to ask the question.
It is.
So.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, would you like to proceed?
Sure. The activities associated with the home occupation shall not detract from the rural character of the residential neighborhood, nor shall they create traffic, environmental, or aesthetic impacts substantially different than the impacts created by other permitted uses in the neighborhood. That is, I believe, a check?
Yes.
Yes.
The home occupation shall be incidental and secondary to the use of the property as a residential dwelling. That is also a check?
Yes.
Home occupation shall be permitted only in single-family or two-family dwelling units and are not permitted in multifamily dwelling units. That is a check?
Yes.
The home occupation shall occupy no more than 25% of the existing normal living area of the primary residence, or if the home occupation is conducted in an accessory building, no more than 50% of the existing normal living area of the primary residence. Up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet may be dedicated to the home occupation. That is a check?
Yes.
Only members of the occupant's immediate family residing on the property may be employed. That is a check. No exterior renovations or construction shall be permitted as part of the home occupation. That is a check. Exterior storage of any products, equipment, machinery, or materials associated with the home occupation prohibited. That is a check. Traffic generated by the home occupation shall not create safety hazards or be substantially greater in volume than would normally be expected in the neighborhood. That is a check. The off-street parking shall be adequate for anticipated customers, although no parking areas in excess of those necessary for normal residential purposes will be allowed. That is a check. The zoning board of adjustments shall consider, in addition to compliance with section 5.12.2 and 5.12.4, whether the childcare facility will adversely affect the subject property and neighboring properties by reason of any unusual sight, light, noise, smell, traffic, adequacy of parking for drop-off, pickup of children, and site improvements such as fencing. Is a fence being required? That is a question for us.
It's a question for her? I believe the drawing shows there is a fence.
I do have a little fenced-in area for them.
Okay.
Is it fenced in, like a fence surrounds the whole area?
So, yeah, like we go out the door and around, but I do have a little fence. We open the door, we go in, a sandbox and everything.
I couldn't tell, I drove by.
Yeah. No, no, it's in the back. It's far away from.
Now, you stated that in your application that it's the requirements by the state of New Hampshire and the Department of Health and Human Services. Do they require that fencing? I thought so. Thank you.
Welcome.
For the record.
Okay, so that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. And it says, location, description of fence. So as currently in place? I guess.
I don't remember this requirement.
You know.
I don't either.
These have changed a few times.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe the next time we could take our forms and maybe have them identical.
Right.
Because what the applicant fills out and what we read here are two different things.
That's very true.
So we just want to make sure that those always marry.
Yes, I had to do those at the last minute.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
If they're not correct, I can.
Yeah, just so that we have clarification because it makes it a little.
So you're saying.
So what we have for our form back here and what the applicant actually fills out, the wording is slightly different, so it causes us to go off number.
I thought I had noticed that.
Yes.
Looking through this, like, that doesn't seem right.
Yeah.
So for a location, description of fence, should we say?
As submitted, because in the packet there is a submitting of the rooms, how big they are. The fence is not on my.
I think in the outdoor play area, that does show a gate coming in. So I think on that, is the fenced-in area, if you look at, do you have a copy of your packet?
I do.
It's on page 12. It's on the graph paper.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
It's the one that has outdoor play area.
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, I see it.
Yep.
The applicant will have to meet licensing requirements from the state anyway.
Right.
Probably a fence is required, but.
But we have to, we do have to fill out our form, so is that your fenced-in area as we see it in your app, in your application? The outdoor play area, that 24 by 40?
So when you drive by the house, whoever drove by, that big white gate that you see on that side, that is where my little fence is connected to that, and then it comes back and it hits the house.
And that's what we see actually, and it actually looks like it hits your exercise room on one corner, I guess?
Yeah, so when we're outside, we see the window.
You see the window. Okay, perfect.
Laundry room, yeah.
So as submitted.
As submitted, okay.
Our sandbox is against the wall of the house.
Yeah. So what we're going to do is we're just going to marry that to satisfy this one line here.
Hey, Jackie? Yeah, so that white fence right there, we're on the other side of the white fence. That's where we play soccer. And then behind the house, underneath the deck, we're our sandbox and other activities.
Yep, great.
Jackie, I asked you a question. So I did go by there. That is right by South School, right?
Yeah.
Now, is there a lot, I mean, are you, are your, the kids coming during whatever traffic goes into South School as well?
No, I never see a school bus. So my kids are staggered, and the one mom, she's taking the older one to school, and then if the two-year-old has a tantrum, she's arriving late, so my friends are like staggered about.
There's no parking issue because there's really no off-road parking. You gotta be in the driveway or, I just should have asked.
Oh, I have new photos of the driveway of my.
It's a very long driveway.
Yeah, it's a long driveway.
But I made my husband like leave today so I could show you how, between these two trees over here, so the mom would pull in here, she backs up, and then she goes out that way.
So we will need that as an example.
I'll mark that as exhibit A.
Exhibit A. Okay, so that'll be exhibit B. Does anybody want to see this?
We're good.
You're good?
Good.
Good? Okay. You can have these two back.
All home occupations shall be conducted in accordance with all town regulations, state laws, and license requirements. That is a check?
Yes.
A childcare facility shall comply with all applicable licensing requirements of the state of New Hampshire and the Department of Health and Human Services, childcare licensing unit, the New Hampshire Childcare Program Licensing Rules, and the requirements of New Hampshire RSA 170. That is a check. The zoning board of adjustment may impose additional conditions and restrictions it deems desirable or necessary to protect the residence character of the neighborhood. Do we have any of those? I don't believe so.
We're good.
Um. Is that your last question, too, by the way?
Hmm?
Is that your last one?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm just gonna say, do we want to limit the number, or is there, you know?
The state regulates.
Yeah, I think she's limited by the state.
The state. Yep.
For every year that the home occupation remains in effect, a copy of the annual license issued by the state of New Hampshire for the childcare facility shall be provided to the town. That is a check. Hours of occupy, occupation, operation, I should say. On here, it was 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Perfect. And so you have hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 5:00. You replied when I asked, 7:30 to 5:00?
I'm just going by like when the kids arrive, but like I'm up and down there at 7:00.
7:00, okay. So we're going to keep your application as submitted. Okay, thank you.
Sign, I believe there was a request for a freestanding sign.
Yes, there is. So, is freestanding sign or wall sign? On your sign. Freestan, what, it's a freestanding sign or a wall sign?
Well, I was confused a little bit, and I haven't like, because this has to be a yes before I continue with all my other applications. So my dream is to have a tiny little acorn sign hanging from my mailbox, but if it's not allowed on the mailbox because of plows or the mailman, I would gladly put it next to my door.
Okay, so it'll be a wall sign?
Okay.
Okay, and it's not going to be lit?
No, it would just be one flat little wooden acorn.
Okay, and, and in this application, you have to not exceed three square feet, okay? So just make sure you, you follow that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is everyone all set?
Again, I'll ask you a question. Do we take public comment, support, or?
I cannot remember.
Um.
We typically do.
We do.
But it doesn't.
We do. Anyone in favor that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Let the record show that no one. Is there anyone in opposition of the applicant? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Barbara Castles. I live at 3 Brookview Drive by property in the back of Butts 80 South Road.
Okay.
So coming from education, I kind of have an invested interest in this, just because this has been going on for a little while. I don't know why all of a sudden it got attention to it, so I'm not sure if something happened or.
We don't know any of those specifics.
Okay, so I actually have some questions. A couple of them are already answered, so I'll try not to repeat that. My biggest question is, Ms. Lafave a licensed daycare provider? If so, does she have documentation from the state to view today? Coming from an education background, being involved in education, it's really important to maintain health, safety, fire codes. We live in a very similar layout for a home, and I know that in my basement, we've got one way out and one way out only in case of emergency, so it's concerning if there are more than the allowed amount that in case of an emergency, how are they all getting out, and where are they going from there? Has the home been inspected by a state childcare licensing facility to ensure compliance with health, safety, and fire codes? I have questions about fencing. I have direct access to their backyard. There is no enclosed fencing on that property. We used to know the people that lived there prior, so we could see everything that's going on. Like, I can walk directly right through the woods within two, three feet, and their property is right there. Which brings me to a concern, if, God forbid, one of the kids got out, there's a bog behind my home between our property and South School. That's always been a concern of mine, that if, God forbid, a child got out there, something would happen. Who does that fall on? Well, it's part of my property, so it's my responsibility. But my other property, or my other concern about safety is, this is close to South Road. South Road is a very busy road. I don't even walk on South Road. I don't let my kids bike on South Road. I don't walk to school on South Road. I'm that close. If someone gets out, a child gets out, children get out, it happens, but if someone takes off, we recently had a speed limit sign, like the freestanding things that are out that the police department uses, 53 miles an hour. They came down South Road towards South School. That's pretty quick. We're technically in a school zone. My street doesn't even have yellow painting going down the middle. It's a school zone. It flags as 25 miles an hour. So I have general concerns about safety and my own property, my own children, my own pets. And then a few other things were, you know, addressed in terms of how many children. You know, it seems like it might be varying, depend on part-time, you know, full-time. And how is it ultimately going to impact zoning? So if this gets approved and it moves forward, who's to say that down the road, someone else wants to, you know, change up their small business and start like a, a small business repair for cars and stuff? And then we're going down a different road. So while I fully understand the need for childcare, affordable childcare, I just don't think that this is the ideal spot, given location and, you know, where we are. So thank you for your time.
So, well, let's answer one of the questions. So I'll let the applicant answer, I'll give her all the questions, but let me answer your last one because the applicant's not going to know that.
Okay.
This is a request for a home occupation and for childcare. It cannot be a car. It can't turn into anything else. It has to only, it's exactly as it is written and applied for. So the answer to your question, could it turn into a car repair facility? No, it cannot.
No, I didn't mean, sorry, I didn't mean directly her, but I meant like say someone three houses down decides, because that, they got a variance.
That's, it doesn't work that way. Nope, it does not work that way at all. It's on an individual basis.
Okay.
Okay. So the first question is, are you licensed yet with the state of New Hampshire?
Nope, that's why I'm here. This is the top part on the list for them.
Okay, perfect.
I am a nanny, sure.
Okay, so in order for you to get your license for the state of New Hampshire, you have to have a place in which to do that, and that's why you're here, to get that approved first. Okay. The state of New Hampshire, have you spoken with them on what it's going to take? Um, the state of New Hampshire, have you spoken with them on what it's going to take to, uh, take care of children in your home? What that requires?
Then after this would be fire department and then it would be the health officer and then it would be water test and the list goes on. The packet is this big.
Okay, um, and do you remember in that packet, did it address, uh, the fencing for, um, the children?
It says the height, yep.
It's, so it gives you dimensions?
Yep.
Okay, and it gives you how high it's supposed to be?
Yeah, and the fencing that I installed myself this past summer is not around the entire property. It is just inside that little area close to the house.
Which the state of New Hampshire gives you those instructions on what they require?
Correct.
Okay, for that fencing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a minimum that you must do in order to get that state of New Hampshire license?
Correct.
Okay. Um. Do you understand the liability should one of the children get out and, um, be trapped in the bog? And did you read over the application for the state of New Hampshire on that liability for watching children? Okay, so you understand that?
Yeah, I've been in childcare since, uh, like for thirty-three years. It's.
So you understand that responsibility and, okay. Um. Uh, how long have you been at this address?
Since two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. Um, and you know that it is a school zone? Okay, um, and have you seen cars go slow or fast on that road?
Oh, yeah, I know that sign she's speaking of, cause I walk down her road evenings with my dog and, uh, yeah, we move over because of the thing, but we are not in the front.
There's a lot of motorists that don't respect the school zone. Absolutely, I agree with that.
We love when Mr. Policeman is over there with his, by the apartments, they're making people slow down around the curve.
Yeah. Um, have, has all the questions that you have, has the, is that satisfactory for your concerns?
Um, my biggest question is, how come all of this isn't already in place? How come the coding hasn't been taken care of? How come the licensing hasn't been taken care of?
Because, so, hold on. Because she can't get a license unless she has a place to do it. So this is the first step in that. So whether or not she gets it is how she can proceed. Either she can or she cannot proceed.
Right, in terms of the business, but I meant in terms of being a licensed childcare provider, not instead of having her own facility, but she should be already licensed if she's taking care of children.
The number. The requirement is triggered by a number.
A number.
So she's below it right now and she'll be above it with the number coming in.
Yeah, can I just say, like, I'm, I'm not trying to open a center. This is not a dream. I am.
That's correct.
A nanny shared by a couple of families and they just happened to got pregnant and I need the license to have that extra friend come.
So that's why this application is very important because you are attesting that you are going to follow what it is that we may or may not approve. Um, so that keeps everybody in check, what you can and cannot do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at this, for this variant, for this, uh, um, request for a home occupation. Um, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to come up, um, that is in opposition? Okay, let the record show there are none. Do we have any more questions from the board? We're good?
Great.
Okay. Do I have a?
Yes. In case number eleven nineteen twenty twenty-five dash one, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for a special exception from LZO five dot twelve dot five to allow use of a home occupation for a childcare facility at eighty South Road in the AR one zoning district.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rob. All those in favor? Aye.
Excuse me.
Uh, we have five. One, two, three, four, five. We have five.
So I'm not voting.
Correct. Correct. Uh, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, do I need to sign anything?
I signed that one.
You got it.
In case number eleven nineteen twenty-five dash one, the request for a special exception was granted.
All set.
You ready for the next case?
Yes, sir.
Case number eleven nineteen twenty twenty-five dash two, a request for a variance from LZO seven dot five dot C dot one to allow a sign to exceed ten feet in height, parcels located at one seventy-five Rockingham Road in the MUC zoning district tax map sixty-five, lot sixty dash two. Vista Ridge Medical LLC owner Classic Signs Inc., an applicant.
Good evening. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Justin Parker. I work for Classic Signs, which is located at thirteen Columbia Drive, uh, Amherst, New Hampshire.
And you will be presenting?
Yes. All right, uh, we are, um, we're proposing to, uh, install a sign that is above the allowed height at one hundred and seventy-five Rockingham Road. The allowed height by code is ten feet and our proposed height is twenty feet. Um, and I will now go through the, uh, the five points of law. Uh, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, this business will mainly be a medical office with multiple tenants. Any increased visibility for the business will be in line with the public interest. There are also multiple signs that are above the allowed height on the same street in the, in the immediate vicinity. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. The ordinance previously allowed signs up to a max height of thirty feet to be constructed. Some of the signs that were installed under the previous height allowance are still standing, like the subway sign. There are others that are nearby that are also above the current ten-foot allowance and are around the size of our proposed sign. Substantial justice is done. The granting of this variance would not have substantial visual effect on the surrounding area. There are already signs that are above the allowed height in the surrounding area. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There are no major residential areas within direct line of sight to the sign. There are also signs of similar height near this property. Uh, for the purposes, or, um, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. Um, for the purposes of this paragraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The proposed location of the sign is uphill from the main street of, is uphill from the ma- main street that this sign will be advertising to. This will cause decreased visibility, especially to the lower portion of the sign. There are also shrubs that will obstruct the view, um, that would obscure the sign. Having the sign higher will alleviate this issue. The proposed use is a reasonable one. This sign is for a medical office and does not compete with any other like businesses within sight of the pro sign. There are also multiple signs that are above the allowed height near this property, so the taller sign will not look out of place.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, looking for pictures.
Oh, we got none.
Oh, really?
We've got nothing. I, I was looking. I thought my, uh, board was wrong. All right, so we're gonna have to share this. Here we go.
Uh, do you want the plot plan where it's going?
Yes, we're gonna need that as well. So we're gonna have Exhibit A and B. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
All right, do you wanna see where it is going?
So this is gonna be Exhibit B?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I'll let it look, maybe look out.
There is nothing there now.
Correct.
Uh, no.
No.
Nope.
It's no construction.
Yep. Verifying that for the record.
Yep.
There's signage on the building itself.
Yeah.
It's a soft sign, right like a.
Yeah, there's a temp sign up right now.
I'm a visual person. Can you, I, I know the building. Um, can you explain where the sign will be?
Um, it's gonna be kinda right on the corner, um, like.
So the driveway is on Vista Ridge, right?
Yeah. Yep, so it's gonna be right where, um, pretty much where that main street is and Vista Ridge. So it's gonna be.
On that corner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so for this rendition, uh, does anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask?
I don't understand what that, but.
Oh, that's, uh, that's the nighttime view to show that it's lit.
Okay, so this would be more than just your business being displayed on this sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask on Exhibit B?
Hmm?
So this is the plot. So is the sign basically parallel to Rockingham Road or is it perpendicular to Rockingham?
Uh, the sign is perpendicular.
To Rockingham Road?
Yep, uh, cause Vista Ridge doesn't get that much, uh, traffic, so we're gonna be advertising to the main street there.
So is the red mark on this, is that representative of where the sign's gonna be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is the sign going to be lit?
Yes.
Yeah, it's still making its way.
You have any questions, Rob?
Well, I'm still looking to wait to see the sign. We haven't seen the sign.
Oh, okay. Bring it down, pass it down.
I guess my only question is, so it is a lit sign, got it?
Yep.
Um. And. I, I, I guess maybe I missed it, but I, I was with you as you read your, uh, five points. But, um, just stating that other people have taller signs, to me is not cutting it. I mean, why do you need a taller sign than what's, what the maximum is? Specifically, I just wanted for the record.
Thank you.
Uh, mainly just to get it up there so that it's a lot more visible. I mean, we have multiple tenants, so the, uh, the size isn't going to be, um, viewed in this specific one, but we're going for that variance next, so that.
We can't talk about the next variance.
Um, so the, um, if they're a little bit higher up, there's bushes and stuff in the way, um, it'll be a lot easier to see. Um, and then it, I mean, it doesn't really harm anybody.
Have you done other clients come to boards about signs?
Yes.
Okay. Spirit of the ordinance, have you fully understood what that means?
Um, at certain points, I've only been at this job about a year.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody else? Okay, so. You wrote in the spirit of the ordinance, the ordinance previously allowed signs up to a maximum height of thirty feet to be constructed.
Hmm.
Some of the signs that were installed under the previous height allowance are still standing, like the subway sign. There are others nearby that are also above the current ten-foot allowance and are around the size of our proposed sign. When you come before a board, the spirit of the ordinance is about how it pertains to you, not others around you. So for the record, the spirit of the ordinance for public safety, health and all the other reasons that are listed, which, that the, the spirit of the ordinance would, for number two, the variance will not violate the basic objectives of the ordinance, protection of health, safety and welfare. So would you like to state for the record how that sign would apply to the spirit of the ordinance?
Uh, for safety and welfare?
Yes, cause that's really the question.
Yes, and I'm guessing the content of the sign doesn't really matter in this, uh, instance.
Yeah, we can't control the content of the sign.
No.
All right. Um.
So what road is it located on?
It is on, is on Vista Ridge officially.
And also what other road?
Uh, Rockingham, sorry, uh, one seventy-five Rockingham Road.
Right. Is there anything unique about Rockingham Road?
I believe it's quite fast and it's quite large.
Thank you. So the spirit of the ordinance.
Yep, uh, that due to safety, um, uh, people at a street with this high of a speed limit, uh, it would be much easier for them to locate the sign and could potentially avoid some dangerous, um, you know, looking over your shoulder, uh, trying to find some things. So that would help alleviate any safety concerns from trying to locate from this busy road.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Is there any other, um?
Okay. A question.
Yes, Mitch.
So usually I think when somebody says they need a higher sign, it's not because the property is higher, it's because the property is low.
Hmm.
You're saying it's a higher property, therefore the sign must be even higher. I, 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 that's the thing I struggled with.
Uh, with the angle and the bushes, um, it would obscure. Uh, cause if you're down on the ground and there's bushes here, then you'd have to sign up.
I mean, the bushes, are they, a buffer, a green buffer that you must keep or?
Uh, I'm not sure. I think they're in the right way for the, um, uh, for that, uh, street light there. Or sorry, not street light.
Can you verify if there's, if on that property, they had to keep any buffer? Do you know?
I don't believe the, they were the other green space, but no buffer.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
It appears that the ordinance was changed at some time. If there's plenty of signs that are much taller, he says it was thirty. Was there a specific safety reason for that to be changed?
So we don't talk about the changes, we just talk about what we have to deal with today and what our ordinance.
Says now.
Says now.
Okay.
Okay, cause we can't hash out what was.
Yep.
So that property does have an odd slope up and I agree with you. When I first read it, it seemed odd, but if you've got several different tenants on the sign, if they're, if they're too low, you're not gonna see them. So and the idea of the sign is to identify the business and it is a busy road and so people can get there in a safe manner. Um, I do know that the smoking, the cigar place got a variance, cause that was the very first case I ever heard. So I do know they have a variance for their sign, cause it's tall, um, and theirs is near the highway. So I actually, for an odd argument, but I understood it. Such as, sort of, if the sign's up too high and you're, and you're driving, your line of view is not gonna go up that high.
My turn. Thank you. That was, that was really good, though. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, I'd like to take it out to the audience. Anyone in favor of the applicant? Let the record show that no one has approached that would like to speak in favor. Is there anyone in opposition that would like to speak? Let the record show there is no opposition. Bringing it one last time to the board before we close deliberations. We're good? Okay, let's go into deliberations.
Do we need to discuss it or you wanna just go into the five points?
Uh, I don't have anything to discuss. Does anybody?
Not anything to discuss. I have one question. Nick, do you, did you have to see where the placement of the sign would be? It's not in the line sites of the road, would it be? Like it wouldn't.
No, it's, it's required to be fifteen feet back from the property line.
Because that is a busy road, I wouldn't worry.
Yeah.
That's a very busy road. It's up on this high too.
Does, um, does our, um, be exhibit, does that show fifteen feet back or more or?
I don't think you can tell on that little.
Can't tell.
No, I don't think you can tell.
There should be dimensions on there.
All right.
There are dimension, there is an indication that there's, there, fifteen feet, two inches and three quarters of an inch back from the property line. So that is, that is on there.
Okay. Okay, perfect, so Exhibit B does address that. Are you okay with that, Mitch?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Granting the variance, would or would not be contrary to the public interest because?
I would say would not. It's not gonna alter the character of the neighborhood.
I agree.
It's a busy commercial area.
I agree.
Spirit of the ordinance, would or would not be observed because?
I would say it would be. I mean, I, we, we listened and I asked my question. I don't see any, um, you know, any danger to health, safety or.
I agree.
Due to the speed of that road and people trying to find that, that business or businesses, they're gonna be listed there.
That is the objective.
That was the objective, so I agree.
Granting the variance, would or would not do substantial justice because?
I would say it would.
I would agree. Yeah, I agree.
I agree. I think the loss to the applicant's greater than any gain to the public.
I agree with that.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties would or would not be diminished?
I would say not.
Yeah, I agree. It's a commercial area.
I agree. There was no evidence given, but I agree with that.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because... I would say there is not.
There is not.
That is an oddly sloped property on a main road. You're coming around a corner from the other side.
Increased visibility.
Decreased visibility. I agree with all of that. Yeah, I agree with all of that. Do we all agree on that?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Proposed use is or is not a reasonable one because...
I would say is, I'm sorry.
Signs are reasonable?
Yeah.
Signs are reasonable.
Okay. Comments, restrictions?
Um, I don't think we need any, because we have Exhibit A and B that pretty much tell it all, so...
Correct.
I'm all set. Does anybody else have?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm ready.
Do we have a motion from someone?
I'd like to make a motion in case number 11192025-2 to grant the request for a variance with respect to the height of the sign.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Case number 11192025-2, the request for a variance was granted.
Have a good evening.
Oh, he's back.
He's back.
He's back.
That's right. That's right. Let's try this again. Round two.
All right.
Thank you.
Case number 11192025-3, a request for a variance from LZO 7.6.D.3 to allow a freestanding sign to exceed the permitted area by 45 square feet. Parcels located at 175 Rockingham Road. Vista Ridge Medical LLC owner, Classic Signs applicant.
And we probably took your only copies.
Yes.
Okay. So Exhibit A and B need to be in this packet as well.
So I have two of each, so I'll put them in each packet.
Do you? Perfect. Thank you. That's why we have him do this, because he's very efficient.
Oh, good.
All right, so go ahead and start with the five points of law.
All right. Do you need me to say my name and everything again?
Yes, please.
All right. My name is Justin Parker. I work for Classic Signs. We're representing this client. Classic Signs is located at 13 Columbia Drive, Amherst, New Hampshire. And, all right, let's get into it. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This business will mainly be a medical office with multiple tenants. Any increased visibility for this business will be in line with public interest. It's not very, seems in line with the town character, the design. Spirit of the ordinance is there? The, uh... While this road is a very busy and fast road, any, since we're going to have multiple panels, the total square footage is going to be split up amongst the tenants. So while the sign is, well, the sign is going to be however big it is, it is, or that square footage is split up into, between the tenants. So any, any larger, you know, bigger lettering will probably help visibility on this busy road and probably help with safety. Substantial justice is done. The granting of this variance will not detract from any surrounding property values or take away any potential customers from previously existing businesses of the same type near this location. The individual tenant panels are smaller than the maximum allowed square feet individually. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There are no major residential areas within the line of sight of this proposed sign. There are also no other businesses of the same type within sight of the sign that the business would be competing with. The illumination of the sign will be on a timer in order to limit the amount of light pollution produced. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and provision and this specific application of that provision to the property. The location of this proposed sign is uphill from the main street that the sign will be advertising to, and that main street has a high speed limit, which will cause decreased visibility from the street level, especially to the lower tenant panels. There are also shrubs that will obstruct visibility in the summer. A larger sign area for the tenants would help alleviate these issues. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The sign will mainly be advertising medical services and would benefit from better visibility. No single tenant will have a panel that is larger than the allowed square footage.
Do we have any questions from the panel?
Can I just look at that picture again? So there, I'm sorry, there are three tenants there?
Yep. I think there's three spaces.
Will there only be three spaces?
Yes.
Will there ever be any more?
I believe we will have to come back and talk about that.
That's a great answer.
Can I ask, what hours will it be illuminated?
Um, illuminating, usually we'll do, if the town doesn't have a code that, that limits that kind of thing, we'll usually go with, to when it gets dark, to after the business is closed, maybe an hour after, but usually we don't keep it on after 11:00, something like that. Usually, if we have to, if we have to put a cap on it, usually we'll do, it's illuminated from like 6:30 to 7:00, AM to 11:00 PM. That's generally what we do if we're not told to do anything.
Any other questions?
Okay. So 65 is square footage that is normally allowed, so 45, we're going 110 square feet. It's a pretty big sign.
It is a big sign.
Just making a point.
Any other comments or questions of the applicant for the board? Okay, I'm going to take it out to the audience. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Let the record show that there is no one. Is there anyone in opposition of the applicant? Let the record show there is no one. I'm going to bring it back to the board. You sure you're all set? No other questions? Okay. Deliberation is closed. The hearing is closed, we're going to go into deliberations. Do we need to hash anything out?
Is everybody okay with 110 square feet? Can we do the, the sign on the, the math?
I think it's 115.
We're in deliberations. So...
If it's 65 and 45...
Yep.
110.
Yep. Okay.
I know we're lawyer and not a mathematician, but...
Yep.
Okay.
So everyone is understanding how large that sign is?
I don't really have a concept of how big that is.
Is it drawing? Can you share it again?
I'm just trying to picture 110.
65 is...
What's allowed?
Is the largest ten of them, there's only a 36, and the other two, 17 each. How does that get up to 110?
I don't know, I was going with what the request was. Request was to, to exceed the permitted area by 45 square feet. So if it can be 65, and we're exceeding it by 45, that's where I came up with 110.
That's where she comes up with 110.
And he put in the spirit of the ordinance...
Yeah.
A 36 and a quarter, and two at 17, 75.
It's because of the panels. So I'm going to open up deliberations here.
That's where you got your number from. Okay.
Yep. Can you clarify that you are describing your panels?
Yep. The, the specific measurements that I referenced in there for the square footage, that is just the, like, the tenant panel. And the, the sign ordinance requires the square footage encapsulates the, that top cap and like, some of the other portions, so if you were to... Yeah.
Yeah, it's visible in a, in a, in a drawing, in a rendering of the drawing.
So I read this in total? Close?
Oh, yeah, no. It's almost double.
Yeah.
But...
It's almost double.
Yep. Of course, since we've allowed a very tall sign, if we don't allow a very...
It's not, you haven't taken, it doesn't add in that top panel and anything else, that's what I... The problem.
That says what it is.
Yes.
Can we see that picture again?
I think he's looking at it, too.
Given the location, multi-road, high-speed road. It's not residential.
So probably these two.
If it is residential.
So Nick, the, just for clarification, for the sign, everything is measured?
Yes.
So it's not just his actual panel, but even the header at the top that has...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, we have that top portion. So everything is measured?
That's pretty clear.
For Vista Ridge Medical Park, plus the panels.
I suppose if that top part is about 30, looks similar to this one. Is it giving us 10 by 30, so it's about 33? Gets close to 110. I can see that.
Correct. Yep.
Ask a question of the, we're back open, right?
We're back open, if you have questions.
I just have one question. I mean, obviously, the size is almost double, what's allowed. In your discussions with the ownership, with the building, was anything smaller discussed? And why did you settle on this?
Well, the one that they did propose was bigger.
Bigger than this?
Yeah. So we tried to kind of talk them down.
Well, it does sort of create the question. I mean, you want it to be able to be seen, and the top doesn't mention the business, it just mentions the medical park. Businesses are lower, you know? Like, it seems to defeat the purpose, but if you're looking for a particular business...
Brendan, do you have any comments?
No, the only thing I can think is that the Vista Ridge Medical Park, sometimes you don't need to know the specific business. They can tell you, yeah, we're in Vista Ridge Medical Park, this is where it is. So I think there is value to having that, the same way that if someone tells you, I can't think of a good example right now, that, you know...
I'm in the Shaws Plaza.
Yeah, Shaws Plaza, we're in the Leonard A. Common.
Apple Tree. I'm at the Apple Tree Mall.
We're in the Apple Tree Mall, those types of things, so...
Okay, good point. All right, are we all set with the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna go back into deliberations. Okay, do we need to hash anything else out? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go.
Granted the variance, would or would not be contrary to the public interest because... I would say would not.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, it's not contrary to public interest.
Because?
I don't think it changes the character of that neighborhood.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree.
Spirit of the ordinance, would or would not be observed because...
He's asking for a variance on the spirit of the ordinance, so...
I don't see how it, you know, impacts negatively health, safety, or welfare.
Yeah, I agree. I think the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
I agree.
And the applicant did state that in his comments while going through the five points of law. And I agree.
Granted the variance, would or would not do substantial justice because...
I would say it does.
Yeah, I agree.
It doesn't detract from adjacent properties or adjacent property values.
I think there's no loss to the public if the sign is the size it is requested.
I would agree.
I agree. Are you good, Suzanne?
I agree.
Thank you.
You know, I'll speak up.
Thank you.
For the following reasons, the values surrounding properties would or would not be diminished? I would say would not.
Agreed.
Agree.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because...
I'd say is not.
I agree.
I agree.
The reasons.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Same as the last, up on the hill.
It's a busy area, it's commercial.
Very busy, very busy street. Yep.
Proposed use is or is not a reasonable one because is, signs are reasonable?
Signs are reasonable.
I agree.
Okay. Comments, restrictions?
I have none, because the drawing entailed it all.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion in case number 11192025-3 to grant the request for a variance from LZO 7.6.D.3 to allow a freestanding sign to exceed the area, permitted area by 45 square feet.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I just want to make sure that 45 is correct. Is it correct? Because we had...
No, you're correct. It should be 50.
It should be 50.
You're correct. Correct, so I will redo my motion.
Thank you.
In case number, thank you very much.
No worries.
In case number 11192025-3, the request for a variance from LZO 7.6.D.3.A to allow a freestanding sign to exceed the permitted area by 50 square feet.
Thank you. For that correction. Good eye. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
In case number 11192025-3, the request for a variance was granted. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Can I have that very first one? Because I didn't put granting. It's a motion. I don't think I filled that out. See?
You did.
Yes. No. Motion to grant.
I did not do that.
I'm sure, maybe I missed a second, I'm not sure.
That was a good, that was a good, that was a good catch.
It didn't seem to add up, though, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's like, there's five, and there's five, but then there's a five at the end.
I added, and it's...
Exactly, you need to add them all together, you know?
So I have to recuse myself, so I can have that point somebody.
Okay. For the, to read into the record that it's continuance?
Sure.
And you can do them all in one shot?
Okay.
They are, they have asked to be withdrawn without prejudice, not continued.
Oh, withdrawn, okay.
So for case number 11192025-4 through case number 11192025-10, those cases have been withdrawn without prejudice.
Do I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And Suzanne must recuse herself from the next case. So Lisa, you want to be a voting member, please? Wonderful. Okay, so let me go over a few things here.
Sure.
All right, so other business this evening. For my new board members, the request for a rehearing, are you, um... Did you review what that required? And you understand the request for a rehearing and the details of why and how it came about? Do you understand that concept? Do you understand that concept? I just want to make sure. Um, let me just, just so that you can review. Take a look at that. And what, there you go, and you can keep that.
Do you want me to read it in, or do you want me to wait?
Uh, wait a second.
You got it.
Do you have another? Do you have one of those sheets?
Oh, yep.
I'll share it with these folks.
Oh, got it.
It's been a long time since I've looked at that.
You got it, as a matter of fact, I have, I'll give you each your own, how's that?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
There you go.
Let me take a cup of coffee.
Alright, so are you good with the review? So a request for a rehearing allows the board to review the minutes of the meeting when this case was heard. And it, the, um, the applicant is asking for a rehearing. This process, the request for a rehearing, allows the board to review the minutes and to. Look at the process, the night that it was, the applicant was heard. And it also allows the board to have an opportunity, should there have been an error, um, a procedural error, um, to, uh, correct it. Because, as you know, and for the audience here, you have what we call the one bite of the apple. When you come to the board, you can present your case, but you can only present that case once. Either it's accepted or denied, but you cannot come to the board again and present the same case. So this process allows for correction on either side of, uh, the table, if you will, the applicant and the ZBA. Alright, so, um, go ahead and read it into the record.
Case number eight twenty twenty twenty-five dash seven, a request for a rehearing of the September seventeenth twenty twenty-five denial of a variance from LZO section four dot six dot six dot five to allow the construction of six duplexes. The parcel is located at two ninety-six Nashville Road in the C two zoning district, tax map two, lot twenty-five dash zero, Vigent Family Properties LLC, owner and applicant.
Now, um, in your packets for this evening, you also had the request, um, that was submitted and all of the reasons. Did you all read them?
Hmm.
Okay, so, I'd like to put for the record that this case number eight twenty twenty twenty-five seven was originally scheduled on the August twentieth twenty twenty-five meeting. At that time. In the notes, the case had been continued. And that was on line three seventy-nine through line three eighty-six of the August twentieth twenty twenty-five meeting. Then September seventeenth twenty twenty-five meeting, the case comes before the ZBA. And I was not here, the rest of you were. Line forty-five starts the case, and it goes all the way to line one hundred and twenty-nine for the meeting, uh, for the notes of the meeting. Did you all review them? Okay. So this evening, we are not hearing from the applicant. Upon your review, you have to determine if there was any missed procedural step that the ZBA might have missed. Or did not accurately document on the five points of law. Um, I reviewed all the notes, um, and I believe that order of correction is in order for the ZBA. And, uh, my vote is that a rehearing should be granted, but you all need to, um, uh, vote.
So I, I disagree, I don't believe rehearing is warranted.
Okay.
I, I would agree, I was here.
Agree on what? A rehearing or?
Not be granted.
Not granted?
I feel a rehearing should be granted.
Okay.
I don't, it needs to be granted.
Okay. So that's three. Okay, against you. So the request for a rehearing, go ahead Brendan, if you want to read it.
I need to, I need someone to make them, I need either Rob or Mitch to make a motion.
Right.
To deny the request for rehearing.
Correct.
So, does anyone want to make a motion to deny the request for a rehearing?
Mitch, do you have it open, because I'm trying to open the.
So I do have it open, um, so actually, I, I can make the motion, and then I just need one of you to second.
That's fine, I'm trying to get it open.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion in case number eight twenty twenty twenty-five dash seven to deny the request for a rehearing of the September seventeenth twenty twenty-five denial of a variance from LZO section four dot six dot six dot five to allow the construction of six duplexes. Parcels located at two ninety-six Nashville Road in the Commercial Two zoning district, tax map two, lot twenty-five dash zero, Vigent Family Properties LLC, owner and applicant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of the denial of the request for rehearing? Aye. All those opposed to the denial?
Aye.
The request for rehearing in case number eight twenty twenty twenty-five dash seven was denied by a vote of three to two. Okay. Ready for the next one?
Ready for the next one.
Case number ten fifteen twenty twenty-five dash one, request for a rehearing of the October fifteenth twenty twenty-five denial of a variance from LZO. So, here, the issue I have with this one, we didn't deny this variance.
Okay, so let me clarify, read it into the record and I'll clarify what's going on.
Okay. Case number ten fifteen twenty twenty-five dash one, request for a rehearing of the October fifteenth twenty twenty-five denial of a variance from LZO four dot one dot two table to allow use of a facility for the storage, maintenance, and transportation of heavy construction, boring equipment, and offices in the AR one zoning district. The parcel is located at ten one oh eight West Road in the AR one zoning district, uh, tax map five, lot fifty-eight, Allison Bachelder, trustee of the Donna A. Pico Revocable Trust, agreement of November twenty-third nineteen ninety-three, owner, Helical Drilling, applicant.
So this case is listed as a rehearing. This is, it's categorized incorrectly. Because what's happening here, and what I read, is that, because a rehearing is for something that needs an order of correction, a procedural issue that might have occurred. The ZBA might have done something unreasonable, unlawful, and all those terms that I described for the first case for rehearing. This is really not a rehearing. What I have read is they need clarity on the conditions of the variance. So I believe there is, uh, is there a letter that's in there as well?
There is a letter.
And I, I.
It's not in the packets?
It's not in the packet.
It came late in the day.
So that's why I'm asking for the letter. Because from what I see, it needs clarification.
I've never seen that. I don't know procedurally how we proceed with that.
I don't either.
That's why we're gonna clarify it, and then we can also clarify the minutes.
Correct.
So that was the issue?
That is the issue. That's the issue at hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, September.
So, would you like me to read the letter?
Yes, please.
Town of Lennerdery zoning board of adjustment, regarding case number ten fifteen twenty twenty-one dash one, uh, that's an incorrect date. One oh eight West Road, tax map five, lot fifty-eight, Lennerdery NH premises. Dear members of the board, this motion for rehearing is submitted by Helical Drilling, Inc., pursuant to RSA six seven seven two. And while it does not allege any error or regularity in the ZBA's proceedings, we request further clarification from the ZBA regarding the terms deliveries and activities as they appear in its notice of decision. Our intent here is simply to avoid any ambiguity should a complaint ever be submitted to the town of activities located on the premises. Enclosed with this letter are two exhibits taken from the Federal Highway Administration publication number FHWA HRT thirteen dash oh nine one, last updated on November twenty-two thousand fourteen, to supplement the definitions proposed below. The FHA is an objective third-party resource and the exhibits appear to distinguish between heavier vehicles with more axles used by industries such as Helical Drilling, Inc., known to create more noise from those with only two axles which are commonly used by Amazon, UPS, and private owners. The conditions appearing in the ZBA notice of decision include, there will be no deliveries or other activity at the site before seven AM or after five PM Monday to Friday. The business will have no greater than thirteen employees. There will be no deliveries or other activity at the site on Saturdays or Sundays. The only uses from table four point one point two that are allowed of the property are a warehouse and storage up to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, professional office space, outdoor storage of goods and materials not to exceed five to send, five to ten percent of the gross floor area as an accessory use. The following definitions are proposed to supplement conditions number one and number three. Delivery or deliveries means the transportation of goods or heavy equipment to or from the premises by any vehicle having more than two axles listed as the most recent version of the Federal Highway Administration publication number FHWA HRT thirteen dash oh nine one, as within class group six or higher as shown on exhibit A and illustrated by exhibit B. Activity means the movement, transport, loading, or unloading of materials located on the premises or the use, operation, or movement of heavy construction equipment or vehicles listed on the most recent version of Federal Highway Administration publication number FHWA HRT dash thirteen dash oh nine one, as within class group six or higher as shown on exhibit A and illustrated by exhibit B, or those exceeding the noise limit set forth in section fifteen, five dot one dot sixteen dot two of the Town of Lennerdery zoning ordinance. The exhibit shows vehicles included in class group six have only two axles, which are more often seen traveling through residential areas or used by private individuals, and as a consequence do not create unusual noise. To be clear, my client's intent here is not to expand the ZBA's approved hours of operation, but they respectfully request some additional clarity should an employee choose to work in the office on a Saturday or a UPS truck delivers a package outside the approved hours of operation. Should the ZBA feel this letter can be addressed without a hearing, we are fine with that, but leave that question to the ZBA. Sincerely yours, Patricia Panchocchio, Pan, Panchopio.
Panchiaco.
Panchiaco, thank you. Jeez, that was a tough one, the early one. Enclosures.
So they're asking for clarity and?
No, they're asking for a rehearing, so either we're going to approve a rehearing?
No, that's not what they're asking for.
Statutorily, this is what you are allowed to do by statute, two seventy-seven two. You can ask for a rehearing.
So, so just to make sure, because I was here and there was a lot of testimony given that day, those who were here heard it, uh, they're looking, just to make sure I understand, okay? Because that.
That's why I had him read the, the letter into the record.
I, I understand, Madam Chair, but I don't, you weren't here for that meeting, correct? I'm not trying to be.
I, no, oh absolutely, I was not here, but I have the minutes in front of me.
I get it.
Which is the official record.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of concern about noise and deliveries and there was, I'll be brief, and there was some confusion about. The owners, and, and in my business, we use Helical Drilling, so I'm very familiar with it. But there was some disconnect between the things that could control as the owners of that property, and the deliveries that could control, and third-party deliveries that no control over, some of which were heavy-duty deliveries early, early in the morning in a residential area. That, that's being succinct, okay? Now, what I understand is that they're saying we want deliveries of smaller vehicles, not between those hours if necessary, including weekends. But they want to still restrict, I'm not sure I understand, restrict the heavy delivery still from seven to five AM, Monday through Friday, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Can I intercede here?
I'm, I'm done, I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what they're asking, not just the letter.
We can either approve a rehearing, which we will hear this in December, or we will not approve a rehearing.
But can we approve a rehearing for a limited set of things?
No.
Hit open.
According to the statute, um, an abut is defined, may apply for a rehearing in respect to any matter determined in the action or proceeding or covered or included in the order. I think that covers it. Specifying the motion for rehearing is the grounds therefore, and the board of adjustment may grant such rehearing if it's an opinion, good reason thereof is stated in the motion.
So, the letter asks for clarification, the way.
We don't have the, we don't have the authority to do that.
When we don't document and tighten up our language on conditions, this is where it leads, so.
We can either vote for a motion for a rehearing.
You can do a motion for a rehearing or not.
On the limited issue that they've requested.
You know what? A rehearing is a rehearing, it starts all over, they gotta present. So just keep that in mind. And we don't have anything that I could find that says, I just need some clarification. They have to come back.
Well, she is asking for that, but I don't think we can do that.
Madam Chair?
But I think Suzanne read, read that we could have a rehearing on a limited aspect of the case.
I spoke to, um.
The attorney.
The attorney. And she said that, she agreed that if we clarify in the minutes for that meeting, exactly what was intended, she would be okay with that. And not the rehearing.
So then we're denying her motion for rehearing, because that's what we have to do.
That would be what I would think would be the logical conclusion.
And amend the minutes.
We have to amend the minutes, so we do one thing at a time.
Okay. Well, can we amend the minutes to?
I don't, I don't think.
We haven't published them yet.
They haven't been.
We haven't voted on the minutes yet.
No, 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 but, yeah, I'm saying.
Actually, we did, oh, we did.
No, we didn't. And then we could amend, because that's why we vote, if we're gonna accept the minutes of the last meeting, we say no, because we need an amendment.
But I think the question is, one that I'm asking, is can we amend the minutes to things that we might not have said at that meeting, because it clarifies it as opposed to.
I, I don't think that this was substantively discussed at that meeting.
No.
I wouldn't, I would not amend the minutes to reflect these act, to reflect these definitions.
Craig, that was not discussed at that meeting.
No, and my.
We have a limited rehearing just for this single issue.
No, no, my opinion is that they were here, they had an opportunity to get these definitions tightened up if they wanted to, they didn't do it. They haven't pointed to any error of law that we've made, I would deny their request for rehearing.
I'm with Brendan.
Yeah, do you want to go around and decide?
Right, well, I think the first thing is to decide whether we're having a rehearing or not.
That's what I'm saying.
I was here for that, and I think they tried to tighten it up. I think they did, because that's when I said you can't stop, if somebody next door has a dog, starts to bark, you can't do that. They tried to tighten it up, they tried to say, certain times, certain noise.
Right, but that.
I am not inclined.
My very limited knowledge of zoning.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what has, what has the majority.
Why don't we, I mean.
So I would vote to deny.
I would vote to deny.
Before, Nick, do you have any input into this?
Well, I'm not sure if I heard right, but when Suzanne read that statute, I believe it said that the abutters have a right to ask for a rehearing in the statute. They didn't mention the.
No, I think the applicant did.
I just, I didn't read the whole, I just was getting to the point where, abutters and the applicant, there's a whole. Yes. A whole row of people that can.
Any party to the action or proceeding or an abutter as defined by RSA may apply for a rehearing.
Yeah, so they could, they could all come.
I was just picking up where we're, what, what they could apply for rehearing for, so.
Can you go back to the part about a portion, like?
So, an abutter as defined RSA may apply for a rehearing in respect to any matter determined in the action or proceeding or covered or included in the order. Specifying motion for a hearing, the grounds thereof. So I think that it would qualify under that, but I am with Brendan that I would, my point was to limit the amount of traffic going in there regardless of the size of it.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I as well.
Based on testimony of, of abutters, I would say a hundred percent agree with that.
Um, so agree with what?
To deny the.
To deny the request.
Yeah.
If you want to take a vote, we'll be happy to vote. So I would agree.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Now we know what our motion is.
Right.
Well, our motion is to.
Okay, so someone will have to make a motion.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion in case number ten fifteen twenty twenty-five dash one to deny the request for a rehearing of the October fifteenth twenty twenty-five, uh, granting of the variance from LZO four dot one dot two table to allow the use of a facility for the storage, maintenance, and transportation of heavy construction, boring equipment, and offices at one oh eight West Road.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Okay.
Do we have any other business communication or miscellaneous that we need to attend to this evening?
We can approve the minutes from September.
Okay, other than that, we have nothing else, okay. So now, for the October 15th, 2025 meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 15th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain, I was not here.
We're December 17th, right?
December 17th is our next meeting, yes.
This is the one where we had, whatever we had.
Okay.
Didn't we have to do these minutes now?
We just voted on these.
We did this September.
We did not.
We did not.
You did October 20th.
There's so many minutes.
You did October twice. We did October twice.
Is that right?
Where?
We did.
In the beginning you did it and got that out of the way and tabled September till now.
Okay, that's why it seems odd.
It was a duplicate, we just?
Sorry.
Do you need a motion?
The problem with the September 17th minutes are we did not listen to a request for, to change administrative decision, and we went and went forward with the variance.
Right.
So, I don't know how we want to clarify that, that is what we did, at the request of the applicant, or, I don't think that we unilaterally made that decision.
I don't think it was a request of the applicant, it was just something that was noticed, and was needed to be clarified that?
What page is the particular area?
So it's at the, it's on page five, starts on page four, and it says at the very end, the app, yeah, the applicant withdrew the request for relief from administrative decision.
Because you can't have the, you can't act on the variance before the administrative, what's it called? Administrative decision, yeah, the appeal of the administrative decision needed to be denied, so that the variance could then be heard. So it's kind of mixed up.
Right, but is there anything we can do about that now? We're outside the appeal period.
That's what I said, and no one responded to me, I'm saying, why are we addressing this, the 30 days is over, there's no one to appeal.
I'm sorry.
What is the issue? No, not you, I didn't send it to you, I sent it to staff.
Oh, okay.
No one responded to me.
Yeah.
I don't know, just to make note of it somehow.
I don't understand what note we're supposed to make.
I'm talking about amending the minutes?
Yes. This is, this is what actually happened, I don't know how we amended.
Yeah, this is what happened, that's what happened, the minutes, the minutes, the quota, I would approve it. I would approve the minutes.
If you want to tell us something that?
Show?
We can do it, but this is what happened.
Yeah, that's the problem, you can't really say, we wish something different happened, so we'll say something different.
But we can acknowledge that there was a procedural error, and we document it, and then we approve the minutes.
Okay.
I believe that that's how it should work. Okay. So would someone like to officially state how that procedure was? For the record, what was wrong that night?
So in cases 917, 2025-1 and 917, 2025-2, the applicant withdrew their request for relief from administrative decision, and the board then ruled on case 917, 2025-2, which was a request for a variance. Procedurally, what should have occurred was the request for relief from administrative decision in case number 917, 2025-1 should have been denied in advance of the board ruling on the variance in case 917, 2025-2. That did not occur, but the variance in case 917, 2025-2 was granted nonetheless.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, and I will abstain, for the record.
And now we need a motion for the minutes?
That was?
That was the motion.
For the minutes, okay. With that statement, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yep. And we are now done.
How about a motion to adjourn?
Would someone like to adjourn for the November 19th, ZBA of Lenandary, New Hampshire? Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second? Okay, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're done.